Hello and good evening everybody, those of you here in the hall and anyone watching on the live stream and to councillors, thank you for coming along to our May Full Council, which is the annual full council meeting. So although there are quite a lot of items on the agenda, a lot of them are actually quite just routine things that have to be ticked off at this point in the year, so they won't take as long as it might appear. And the very first item on the agenda is to elect a council chair and town mayor for the coming year. So do I have any nominations please? Tim?
I'd like to nominate councillor Vittles.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Nope. Okay, so can I take a show of hands in support of Jack Vittles please?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six and any against?
Any against?
None. Okay.
One abstention.
From Alex. Okay, everyone else is abstaining.
So how many are abstaining then? Four?
Four. Okay, so that means that Jack Vittles is elected mayor for the coming year. So at this point we switch seats and I put this over Jack's neck.
Cheers. Sorry, I've left all my stuff over there. I'll grab it at the end. Right, okay. Thank you Katie. Item number two then, I guess?
Signing the declaration.
Sign. Do I have to sign that right now?
A good idea.
Fine, okay.
It's a case of changing moods, Jack.
I noticed nobody checked I was okay with it. Was it the seventh?
Seventh, I don't know.
Cool. Is that it? Is that okay?
And then Ian's going to sign it, but we'll do that in the...
Fine, okay. Lovely. Okay. That was item number two. I was signing the declaration of acceptance. Item number three is questions and comments from the public and councillors. We'll take questions on the traffic agenda item under the item if that's okay. We will get there quite speedily. Most things are procedural. But if we've got other questions on different topics, Sarah?
Right, so we've got Natalia, Ms Chenko.
Natalia?
From the bottom of our hearts, we would like to express our gratitude for everything you have done for Ukrainian community. We want you to know how much we appreciate this and we always will remember your continuous support. Thank you very much.
Brilliant. Thank you. Brilliant, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to our Ukrainian residents. You've been an absolute joy to have in our community. You contribute so much and it's a pleasure to see you involved in all our events and activities. So it's very kind of you, but it has really been a pleasure, not a duty. Thank you.
Brilliant. Lovely. Thank you. Just to echo what Katie said. That's really nice. Thank you. Next question, Sarah.
We have an emailed in question from...
Oh, okay.
So we've got you.
We've got the question as well.
There's the question.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can answer part one and we'll move on to the clarification part two.
Fine, okay. So we've had a pre-submitted email question from Cheryl Roberts. I'll read it out and then I can give an answer as well. So she is asking, can you please tell me what percentage of town council income is spent on salaries of those employed by said council? Also, how much the new office and expenditure is, please? So I have the figure in front of me for 2023/24, which is 54% of town council income is spent on salaries. And I think we've gone back and asked her for a bit more info on the second part, is that right?
Yes.
To see exactly what it is that she's looking for. So I suspect once she's clarified that, we'll go back and writing on the second part. Okay, that's that one?
Okay.
Anything else?
It's traffic after that.
There's traffic after that. Okay, we'll take that, those questions under the item if that's okay. Item number four is apologies from councillors unable to make the meeting. We're just one short, I think.
Yes, from councillor Garwood.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Item number five, declarations of interest from councillors. Does anybody have any declarations of interest this evening?
Can I make a comment? Sorry, can I make a comment about the 6000...
Cool.
I just feel that it's a real shame not to actually, as a group of councillors, thank Katie for being mayor for two years. And I don't think we did that. And so can I, can I just step back, just a couple of agenda items? I thought you were going to do that, Jack.
It's going to come under my incoming chair to give an update. I do have something written.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It just seemed like...
You've stolen my thunder, Alex.
I'm sorry. It seemed like, you know, we'd gone down the ski journey and I thought surely...
No, I was going to try and get through the dull bits and then do that. Sorry. You're right. Maybe it should come a bit higher and, but we will be saying nice things.
It seems like an important... Okay, sorry.
I appreciate it, Alex. Thank you very much.
It's there. It's there. We'll come to it, don't worry. Where were we? Decisions of interest. Nobody had any, did they? No, lovely. So item number six is the election of vice chair and deputy town mayor. So to accept nominations for the election of this role. I would like to nominate councillor Blackwell if he's willing to accept. Does anybody else have any further nominations? No. Do I need a seconder?
Ideally, yes.
Ideally, a seconder. Anybody willing to second? Sarah is happy to second. All those in favour of councillor Blackwell as vice chair?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And all those against? No, against. Assuming abstentions?
Four abstentions.
Yeah.
And...
Lovely. Congratulations, Sarah. Item number seven, register of members' interests. So this is, I presume, if there's been any changes over the last year? Does anybody have any of these they want to give at the moment?
Just one more.
It's, it's already on there, don't worry. It's already on there. We're all, we're all, I will, I will, I will deal with that. I am absolutely a member of the cricket club as Alex is a member of the rowing club, as everybody is a member of different clubs. So I think it's really, really important, and I'd like this minuted actually, that it's really, really important that our town councillors actively engaged in loads of different groups around the town. And I think me being a part of the cricket club and all of us being part of different groups is really important. And it's brilliant that we're such active members in different communities. And whenever that item comes up and it's related to cricket club business, I will absolutely declare that interest. I'm even happy to step out of the chair for those items and hand over to Sam if it's full town council. That is not a problem.
I just want to say that we don't actually have to declare them out loud here. It's just to make sure that they are...
Registered correctly.
Registered with the town clerk.
Absolutely. I know it was a joke, but I just want to make that really clear because I, because I've had some, obviously some feedback on that before in previous years and it's been quite unpleasant. So I just want to make that really clear. But I appreciate it was only a joke.
Some more, please, for us, please.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm saying it for the record, not, not at you, I promise. Okay. Item number eight is the minutes of the previous meeting on the 16th of April. Does anybody have any amendments or comments to make on those? No? In which case can I have a proposer for those minutes? Tim, seconder, Jenny? All in favour of adopting those minutes from the 16th of April?
One, two, three...
Sorry.
Four, five, six.
Lovely. Was that enough? That was everybody, wasn't it?
Well, that's enough to carry.
Fine. Anybody against those minutes?
I was just going to say, because it wasn't there. It doesn't actually matter. Lovely, seven. Thank you.
Fine. Happy with that. Love, do you need to sign anything or is it okay?
We'll do it.
Do it at the end. Lovely. Item number nine, matters arising from the last committee meeting. Does anybody have any matters arising? No. Okidok. So item number ten is the chairs update. So the first part of that is the outgoing chair to give a verbal update. So I'll hand back over to Katie.
Thank you, Jack. My apologies first of all. I sent to Sarah, who circulates the announcement, something that I'd started writing and I sent the slightly unfinished version, but I will make up for that this evening. I hadn't meant to include all the, all the commentary on the back. But my engagement since the previous normal full council meeting are published. I won't run through them all, but they've all been varied and enjoyable as ever. And Emma was able to do the Easter bonnet judging, which is always fun. But I was away that weekend, so I'm grateful to her for filling it in. And then it was lovely, of course, to welcome our French twinning visitors from Sully-Saint-Loir. And I'm really grateful to Alex Kay and her husband Simon Kay, who chairs the association for all the work they did for that visit, as well as other volunteers from the twinning committee. And that was a very special visit, not least because they came with their very own band. And if anyone had a chance to hear them, they were absolutely fantastic and made a great contribution to the concert that we had on the Saturday, which I really appreciated as an opportunity to invite mayors from other towns. Because often as mayor, we get invited to other things. And so it's nice to have something that we could invite other people to. And we had some really amazing performances, not just from the French band, but from St. Lawrence School, from the towpath singers, the West Wilts young singers and the Wiltshire Whalers. And we raised well over 600, wasn't it? 731 pounds, I'm remembering it now, for Alzheimer's Support Wiltshire and Oxfam. So I'm very grateful to everybody who is involved with that. Regrettably, the duck race had to be postponed again. And I know that comes as a disappointment to people, but in order to clearly notify people in advance, the decision has to be a best judgment a few days in advance. And it's not simply a matter of what the weather forecast is for the day itself, but how high the river might be. If the water's likely to be covering the pontoon platform at the water's edge, the race can't go ahead because it's needed for the canoeists collecting the ducks and monitoring the finish line. And for the same reason, if the river's flowing too quickly, that's makes it dangerous and impossible for the canoeists. So yeah, that's, that's unfortunate. We also offer our apologies for the confusion over the Green Man Festival. And that fortunately was reinstituted onto the calendar and is definitely going ahead. And I'm grateful to those who sorted out the issues regards parking. The High Court trial concerning the litigation case brought against the council concerning Becky Addy Wood took place last week. The trial ran from Tuesday to Friday afternoon and we now await the outcome. We understand that the judge will hand down his judgment in writing and that this will be at some point within three months, but hopefully considerably sooner rather than later. And as we've said before, the council regrets that the case was brought against it and the considerable amount of officer and councillor time and public money that it's cost. But as the defendant, we were not able to withdraw from the case, although we made every effort to reach a pre-trial settlement. And finally, I'd just like to say it has been a tremendous privilege to have had the opportunity to serve as mayor for two years. Bradford is a wonderful community, full of interesting, engaged, outward looking people. And I'm always aware that some people here have lived here all their lives, as generations have before them, and others are newcomers to the town. And everybody is, is welcome and has something to contribute. And yeah, I, I feel very strongly that, that we all belong here on an equal basis, however long we've been here. I've had the honour to be mayor for some very special occasions, the proclamation and coronation of a new king in particular, as well as visits from both our twin towns, Norden and Sully-Saint-Loir, as well as the group from Tubass in the Palestinian West Bank, with whom we have a friendship link. It's true to say, and I'm sure other mayors would say the same though, that just as special are often those individual conversations you have with people at the smaller groups and gatherings that take place around the town and hear about their experiences living here. I'm hugely grateful to our amazing team of town council staff, who've shown tremendous resilience and flexibility in coping with the very wide range of demands that are placed on them, especially over the last few years as we've taken on so many new responsibilities from Wiltshire Council, which has demanded a big rethink about the way the council operates and the individual roles of individual members of staff. As councillors, we're privileged to take, to work with them on our ideas and our events. And I'm grateful to them for their enthusiasm and loyalty as we do our best to make a success of all we do for the community. And finally, thank you to my deputy for the last year, Emma Franklin, for her support and all the work she's done for the town, not just over the last year, but in her years as a councillor. We've had lots of fun along the way at various, varied events. And so thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you, Katie. The next bit is for me to give a sort of short verbal update, of which I don't have anything to say other than to pay tribute to you really and to thank you for all of your hard work and determination as mayor over the last two years. I think, as you alluded to, it's obviously been a really challenging period. Lots going on, lots of exciting projects and events and some meteor projects to get stuck into as well. But I think it's been plain to see for everyone that you really care about this town and that you care about the people that live here and have tried to do the right thing at every step and brought a real sense of professionalism to the role. And I think that's, that's testament to your character. So from sort of, you know, chairing meetings and guiding the council through all of those projects, to attending all the events, I know you've been to across Wiltshire and the wider area representing the town. I'm sure you've been an absolute credit to us all. So a huge thank you from me and I'm sure from all my fellow councillors and the officers as well for all of your hard work. Thank you. The only other thing I want to say under sort of my update at the moment, having been mayor for 12 minutes, yeah, is just to say that I'm really looking forward to it. It's an absolute honour to be mayor. It genuinely is. I love this town and it's been so welcoming to me and my family since we moved here. And it's been challenging but really fun being on the council and getting to know everybody. So I really look forward to a year of progress, friendly cooperation, collaboration with each other as councillors, with the officers, with all the residents across the town as well. I think we've got lots to achieve in the next year, lots of projects to get moving and get finished and new exciting things to start as well. So hopefully we can all work together and yeah, keep things improving for this town that we all, you know, we're very lucky to call home, I think. So that's, that's what I would say at the moment. And I will have something more substantial to say next time, I'm sure. Okay. Let me come back to the agenda. So item number 11 is the standing orders and financial regulations. And I believe we need to vote on adopting these, is that right?
Yeah, well, just, yeah, approving.
Approving the change, approving the updates. Lovely. And we can take them both together, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on the standing orders, financial regulations that were circulated alongside the agenda? Nope. Okay. In which case can I have a proposer for accepting those amendments to both of them together? We'll take them as one, one thing. Anybody happy to propose? Katie and a seconder? Tim? Lovely. All in favour of adopting those changes?
Seven, eight, one. That's all in favour, lovely.
Lovely. Item number 12 is the health and safety policy statement. To adopt the health and safety policy statement 2024 for the town council. So I'm presuming we need to do the same again, do we? To vote and adopt. Has anybody got any comments or questions on the health and safety policy that was circulated? Nope. Lovely. Same again. I'm looking for a proposer and a seconder to adopt that policy. Sarah and Alison over there. All in favour of adopting that?
Lovely.
Lovely. Nearly there on procedure. Item 13 is to agree the meeting schedule for 20...
Just to note it.
Just to note it? Lovely. It was circulated alongside the agenda, I believe, wasn't it? The meeting schedule for all of our meetings for 2024, 2025. So I think we've had a chance to comment on that already and try and get things as best we can for everybody. So that's just to note that that is with the agenda. And presumably that's online? Is that online now? Or will be very shortly?
Once you, yeah.
Will be once we've noted it. Fine. Lovely. That's brilliant. Item 14 is the annual governance and accountability return for 23/24. And this is to complete section one of that and to note section two. So is there anything to vote on here or is it?
No.
Am I scribbling in things?
Yeah. So we just need you to sign there, please, if that's all right.
Fine.
Section one. And then I have to sign.
You sign as well?
And then we've got to a note section two, but you still have to sign, which is down at the bottom.
Right at the bottom. Yeah.
That's great.
Cool. Is that everything?
That's it.
Okay, fine. I've signed that one. Item number 15 is the traffic modelling study and engagement update and discussion. So as I said at the start, we'll take any questions on this under the item which we've come to now. To begin with, I was just going to give a little bit of an update as to sort of where we are currently and then we can, we can move into different things. So hopefully everybody's had a good chance to look at the report that came through a few months ago, as well as the executive summary. This report from Wiltshire Council's modelers initially looked at a one-way option similar to the social distancing scheme, option, that was option A, and then looked at an option with pinch point sections on Market Street and Silver Street. This was option B. In the report, they were unable to recommend either, so they looked at a blended option. This became option C. So that had priority narrowing on Market Street and one-way on Silver Street. That was their recommended option in the report. We made that report and executive summary available to the public before the public engagement session. And then the public engagement session was opened. That was extended a few weeks ago to make sure we had, or, you know, to attempt to make sure we had real sufficient levels of engagement with that. And also because Wiltshire Council's cabinet member, or members now for transport, had once again changed. So they will need some time to get up to speed with the project and to read the report thoroughly. I know that councillors Garwood, Trimble and Viagar met with those two new council members for Wiltshire Council, walked them around the town and put some questions to them as well. I don't think we've had any responses back from them as of yet to any of that. Nope. Fine. So one of the things I want to say at the moment is I really encourage, if you haven't already, the town, you know, the engagement exercise and the feedback form is open until the 12th of May. So that's this Sunday. So if you haven't already filled it in, I suspect, I'm talking to a room of people who have filled it in, but if you haven't, please do fill it in by the 12th of May. We're really keen to hear from everybody in the town. And also just to say as well, obviously at the moment, the town council hasn't made any decision on whether to ask Wiltshire Council to progress to a design stage, on any of the options, none of the options, or to do nothing at all. So I think this evening should be a really good chance for councillors to discuss the report, have a look at what our next steps might be and see where we can make some headway, hopefully. I'm going to hand over briefly to Tim as our Chair of Sustainable Travel to give a sort of brief explanation on the recommendation in the report. And then we'll have a chance to discuss it as a council. And also we will, we will take those public questions as well, I promise. So I'll hand over to you briefly, Tim, if that's okay?
Thank you, Jack. Is this all? Can you, can you hear me? Okay. Right. I'm just going to quickly run through some of the results from the traffic modelling study that was done sort of last, towards the end of last year and was actually presented to us early in the new year. Oh, hang on.
Wrong word.
Okay, so, so where are we? This whole process goes back to the future transport consultation that took place in late 21 and early 22. So that, that was a big engagement exercise, total of 2,700 respondents. Following that, various meetings were held between the town council and Wiltshire Council. Wiltshire Council are the highways authority. We have no authority over the highways in this town. So we have to work with them. That's really important to realise. Following a number of discussions about the results of the survey and the, or the consultation, Wiltshire Council Highways recommended that we do a traffic modelling study. And their appointed contractor for all this type of work are Atkins Railies. And that study was finalised and the report presented in this January. And we've been engaged in a public engagement exercise since, well, around the end of March. And that is now going to terminate, as Jack said, on the 12th of May, so this Sunday. So we're still in the middle of all that. Initially, the response rate was pretty slow, but it has, has picked up considerably since. So hopefully we'll get a representative sample of opinions. So I've been through this a fair number of times before. I won't labour this, but most people in the town felt that traffic, the vast majority actually felt that traffic was either a problem or a major problem. And the three top priorities were reducing traffic volume, improving pedestrian cyclist safety and improving air quality. We got a lot of requests for 20 mile an hour limits and I'm very supportive of that. And I'm wrestling with Wiltshire Council on that in quite a number of places right now. Talk about the environment here, I don't think. Most people own a petrol or diesel car. Actually, interestingly, 6% of people in this town have an electric car or a plug-in hybrid. And that's, that's way above the national average. That's typically about 1 or 2% at the moment. A lot of people want to use public transport and a lot of people enjoy walking and cycling. So that, that's really good. On the buses, we have now got an improved connection with Bath and Trowbridge. That's every half hour now because, since the D1X came in. So Wiltshire Council have listened to us on, on that. And in spite of the fact that we lost the London to Waterloo direct link, we've now got three trains an hour, well, to Bath and to Trowbridge and to Bristol. So, so that, you know, there is, there is some progress on that. One final thing to highlight here is that the potential new pedestrian bridge was the single most popular answer for, for the question, what would make you walk and cycle more frequently through the town? And that actually came above wider pavements. So, you know, there's quite a, quite a strong support overall for that. Okay, so this is what people said. And at the top, we've got levels of concern for the, for the two-way system. So where you see red, it's either a problem or a major problem, or it's perceived to be that way. And you can see with the current system, just about every category that we asked about was perceived to be some sort of problem and quite a serious problem on most, most of them. And then if you go to the social distancing scheme, that, that red and orange has shrunk right back and it's been replaced by a lot more green. In other words, people feel it's much less of a problem. One caveat about this is that the traffic levels through the duration of the social distancing scheme were generally significantly lower than they were before and after. So, so just bear that in mind. Okay, so if we look at some of the displays that came out of the modelling study itself, what we've got here are average, is an average speed map through the town, on the major routes that were modelled through the town. So what we want to see ideally is speeds of 10 to 15 miles an hour. So wherever this is green, I think we can be sort of... So wherever this is green, I think we can be sort of reasonably happy with it. Once it goes over twenty miles an hour, or twenty-five even worse, I'm less comfortable with it, because that means that if there's an accident at that speed, it's going to be much more serious, particularly for a pedestrian or a cyclist. So for vulnerable road users, you really don't want that. The other thing you don't want are these blue colours, because that is telling you that traffic is either stationary, or it's moving at a stop-start sort of rate. So what we want is to hit that sweet spot, actually the two greens look about the same on this, but they are actually different, believe it or not. And what we're looking at here are the average speeds for the twenty forty-one scenario, where we do nothing. So in other words, the traffic system stays exactly as it is right now. So... So what I would ask you to do is try and bear that plot in your mind, and we'll go to option A. Oh, sorry, no, we weren't... We seem to have lost half the slide, Sarah. Oh, here we are. Don't know what happened. Can I, can I just, okay, I'm just going to, if I flip back, will that go back to? Okay, well, all right. This is option A, so this is essentially very similar to the arrangement that we had during lockdown. There are some differences. There's, there's a bus gate on Silver Street, so about every hour, that bus gate would operate, and the D1 would come up here and carry on its merry way. The other thing that is in here is that the speeds on New Road and Springfield have been artificially slowed, because we don't know exactly what form the traffic calming that we want put in there is going to be, but we know it will slow the traffic speeds. So what I would ask you to look at are the colours on Bath Road, Mount Pleasant and New Road, and also right out to the edge on Winsley Road, and that's, that's the edge of the model. So in other words, you've got now queuing traffic, or very slowly moving traffic, extending all the way up the Bath Road, and all the way up the Winsley Road, and along Mount Pleasant, and, and to a certain degree along New Road.
And what date is the, these, are these speeds supposed to be? You don't have that on your slide as far as I can see, but it's not just like from day one, is it? It's like day nine hundred and ninety-nine in...
It, it's in twenty forty-one, all, all the...
I just wanted you to say that.
Yeah, 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 no, sorry, I should have said that, yeah. Yeah, no, all the mod, all the options are twenty forty-one.
It's on complex modelling, which really, we can hardly trust it to model three years out, but to model twenty forty-one is not going to provide very reliable comparable results, is it, really not? You know, honourably, you and me, Tim, have gone back a long time, we've worked with very complex models, and what's the one thing you always know? They never tell the right answer.
Well, let, let me put it this way, there's, there's an old saying, which I'm sure you're aware of, is that all models are wrong, but some of them are useful, right? And that, that's a maxim that is, is, is well-known throughout the industry. What we've got here is speeds based on multiple runs of, of the traffic scenario in twenty forty-one. I agree that projecting out is potentially fraught with difficulty, but what we are doing with this is looking at figures provided by the Department for Transport, and it's, it's standard practice with traffic modelling to project into the future. And the, the reason for that is that the system, if it changes, will have to be there for decades. And so to assume that the traffic load is going to stay the same is, 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 is pretty unlikely. So the Department for Transport supply these numbers to engineers to use for future, future dates, and that's just standard practice. So I agree that, you know, everything, it could be wrong, it could be wrong, absolutely. I make no bones about that. Right, so unfortunately, we've got a bit of a glitch with the slides, but is it, okay, well, what I would say is the fundamental difference between option A and the twenty forty-one system is that you've got all this blue, particularly up in the north and northwest quadrant of the town. So if I go, hopefully this will go to option C. Right, which it does, that's good. Those blue colours are now replaced by greens and a little bit of yellow, but primarily they're in a range that we would much rather see them in. In other words, the speeds have come up a bit, but not so much that they're representing a potential danger. So what we've got now is a system where traffic is moving, it's not moving slowly, and it's not moving really quickly. So in other words, it's, it's reached a kind of sweet spot. And this is particularly marked in the evening rush hour, when the traffic is returning from Bristol and Bath. So we're just return, you can see the blue there on option A, out along the northwest corridors. Oh! Yeah, there's the blue. And there's the greens with option C. So we're generally at a more desirable sort of speed, if you like. And then what, what are the knock-on effects with that? So if you, if you just measure the times in the evening rush hour for the north-south journey, south to north, in other words, from this point up on the Bath Road, down to this point on the Trowbridge Road, then you'll see that particularly with option A, there's a huge increase in the travel time through the town. And that's, that's due to that congestion up on the north and northwest of the town. And then if we look east-west, there's a similar effect. So in other words, option A, well, it's more than three times, and that's going west to east, I should say, which is the blue. The east-to-west times are about the same. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sorry, Tim, but I know I've, I've said this before, but so, so the, the, the very much focused on best option has been based by the travel times, east and west and north and south, but that was never one of our priorities. So I find it very strange that we've now got an option that has been touted as the best option for somebody, based on results of flawed modelling at the end of twenty forty-one, just, just let me try and finish it, based on a criteria that we said was not our priority. We said it was about pedestrian safety, but as long as you have two-way buses, you cannot narrow your pavements, I mean, so broaden your pavements, so therefore you don't improve pedestrian safety in a town like Bradford-on-Avon. We said it was about air quality, which was never about speeding up traffic through the town and making it run smoothly all the time. It was about not having it standing, but even more importantly, having less of it. And the other thing was to make it, to reduce volume, so that was the one I just said. So the three things that you told us first, we're all absolutely up for that. Two thousand people replied in a response, and then it's been high graded using these plots, and I'm just a bit astonished that all of our efforts as a, as a community, which you were very much part of, and we all agreed to those, those priorities, are reduced to this.
Alex, can I just, I'm sorry. Can I interject? Just one point, is that the reason why, Tim is talking, my understanding is the reason why Tim is talking about traffic flow is to illustrate that congestion, which is pollution, is reduced by having the traffic flow slowly, not too fast, not too slowly. And I think the, the conversation about traffic flow is to do with showing that if you've got slow-moving traffic, it isn't congested, so we've not got great long queues of traffic. And that's why he's talking about that. It isn't because we want traffic to flow quickly, it's that we don't want it piled up and stationary on our roads, that's just as a clarity. The, the way that they model it, because they're traffic engineers, perhaps isn't the vocabulary that, that we would want to use, but that is the reason why, that's why they're talking about that.
I'm going to come to some of those things in a second. This is by way of trying to generate some understanding of the transit time through the, through the town, and how they affect the public transport. And Sarah, I think there's a problem again with this. We're looking for the D1 bus travel times. Yeah, there we go. Now, so in other words, if that congestion, which impacts the pollution as well, but it also affects public transport, and you may say, oh, well, the buses don't matter. I say the buses do matter. I want people to be using the buses. I want, they're, they're part of the overall active travel package, because people walk to and from the buses, and, you know, it, it's a way of reducing traffic, because instead of having forty or fifty cars on the road, you've got forty or fifty passengers on the bus. So this is the effect on the buses. Now, option A in the middle here, oh, sorry, keep doing it wrong. Oh. No, we've lost it again, Sarah. Yeah, uh, we had it then. Yeah, there, that's it. Right, what is happening now with the D1 bus is that the transit time going north to south, in other words, travelling from Bath towards Trowbridge, that time is vastly expanded. Now, the schedule for the D1 bus, that's, that's minutes, yeah. If you, if you think back to the edge of the model, yeah, yeah. In other words, but, but the reason I put those other ones up is the D1 bus doesn't travel north to south or east-west, it travels a composite of the two. So it travels in along the west Winsley Road, and then round and out bank to the Trowbridge Road, and, and vice versa the other way. So that, that time is vastly expanded, it, it, it's basically double what it would normally take. The do-nothing scenario is here, the south-to-north journey times are generally pretty similar, but the north-to-south in the evening goes way, way up. And that makes maintenance of the D1 schedule really, really difficult, because the turnaround time at the Bath Depot currently is six minutes, and that has gone up by thirteen minutes. So that, that doesn't really work.
Annoying here, but this is supposed to be sort of a discussion, and we seem to be having a presentation of stuff we've seen already, but you, I agree, we do, we do want buses, and we want them to be full of people.
Yeah.
But that was not one of our criteria, we did not vote that we wanted the bus to be the most important thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
And a bus timetable and a bus journey route is actually not a law of physics. It's not like, you know, it's not like doing geothermal modelling, where you know what the laws of physics are, and you can put those in. We, we control what that, that is. We, we control it because it's a human movable thing, and we didn't vote for that to be our criteria. So you saying it's really important, and it's going to get all those cars off the road, it might, and it might not, but that wasn't what we voted for as our priority.
Absolutely agree.
To the end of the presentation, then, I'm very happy to... I'm very...
With all due respect, Chair, we were going to, we were, we were told that nothing had been decided by this council, and this sounds very skewed.
Okay, if we can...
I'm telling you what the report found.
If we can, can we, can you get to, if you go to the end of the presentation, Tim, and then we will, we will then absolutely be able to discuss this. That is not...
Okay, yeah. We've lost some again, Sarah, there should be one. It should be, there should be an air quality nitrogen dioxide thing ahead of that. Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, that's all, yeah. Right. So now we're getting to air quality. Unfortunately, this won't come out very well, but the current situation is in a very pale grey. It doesn't look like that normally, but anyway, the current situation from nitrogen dioxide is at this level in the morning, and that level in the evening. Now what you can see is the do-nothing scenario is much, much reduced in both cases, and that is because there's going to be a much greater uptake of electric vehicles, and I know what you're going to say, also, the diesel fleet is getting much cleaner. Euro standard six is much cleaner than the older standard. So as all those older diesels come out of the, the fleets, or cars, there is naturally going to be an improvement in nitrogen dioxide. But if you look at the detail of this, actually, there isn't a huge amount of difference between these three or four options. But you will notice that in each case, option A is slightly worse than the other options. So if you want to go to option A, you have to accept that overall, there's going to be worse air pollution. And then if we look at particulate matter, you can't see it very well, but the top of the pale grey is about there in the morning, and it's about there in the evening. So it's not as dramatic as the nitrogen dioxide, but is definitely a reduction. And that's do-nothing, and that's do-nothing, and there is option A, and there is option A. And in, in all cases, option A is actually worse than any other options. So that's what I'm pointing out. Oh, how did we get to that? Okay. I think in the interest of speed, we will probably, I think we've been through that maybe. Yeah, we don't need to do that. I'm afraid it's... Yeah, 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 hang, hang on a second. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hang, hang on a second. Okay, so again, this doesn't come out very well, but essentially Market Street and Mason's Lane are up here. This is Silver Street, the bridge is just here. And this is option C. This is one way with the bus, bus gate indicated by the blue arrow. And the green areas are areas where potentially you could widen the pavements. So in other words, there's considerable widening possible on Silver Street, even with the bus gate. And there is widening possible at the top of Market Street, where we know that there has been some accident activity. And if you look on the right hand side, this is the crash map for the last twenty years. So this is a historic record of all the incidents where pedestrians have suffered injuries due to road accidents over the last twenty years. And you can see that essentially it's just south of the bridge, St Margaret Street, on the bridge, quite a lot up Silver Street. And there's just a couple there at the top of Market Street and a couple right at the bottom as well. So in other words, the places where you can widen the pavements most effectively coincide with the areas where there have been the most pedestrian accidents. So that is really an important connection to make. And there is one final slide, I think, Sarah, if we can, I don't know if we're going to get it or not. No, that's not it. Something's happened. I think, oh. No, we don't need that. We've done that. We'll just wrap it up there, I think, because it's taken long enough, I think. Is that okay? Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Chair, may I make some quick observations?
Oh, give me two seconds. Let me get back to my position.
You're not that old. I'm older than you.
Sorry. It's a very cumbersome, annoying chain. Um, yes.
Okay. There are just some things that need to be borne in mind with all of this. And I'm not going to say this is a flawed study, but it's questionable. And it's questionable for the following reasons at the very least. First of all, as councillor Kay has pointed out, and as we pointed out to Wiltshire Council when they came here to try and rescue them, that the key, as, as councillor Trimples pointed out, the key criterion that we wanted to address was traffic volume. And actually through this report, it's been described as traffic congestion. They are related, but they're not the same thing, as, as you know, and that needs to be borne in mind. We've actually had several drafts of this report. Every time we've raised a concern, it's been redrafted to try and obfuscate that concern. Uh, there's a random choice of 2041 for, for traffic, okay? Why 2041? Seventeen years out. I don't know how many people in this room are going to be around in 2041. That man there is one, and I think you will as well, Chair, yeah. And, and probably your deputy as well and a few others. But let's face it, it seems a long way out. And therefore it doesn't give me a great deal of confidence when it comes to modelling. The second, the third thing about it is that it ignores a very key and understood aspect of, of our driving behaviour, which is we adjust to traffic conditions if they become permanently congested. Congestion theory says as much. We all know it. If we know a route is going to be congested every time, if we know it's going to be congested every time, we will adapt. This modelling doesn't allow for anything of the sort. So it assumes that we're just going to go blithely into 2041 with, according to the national figures, ten percent more car traffic, eighteen percent more large goods vehicles and light good vehicle, and one percent more heavy goods vehicles on the road. And that, that is going to happen in this town. And therefore we're going to have that problem with the buses, which we're never actually asked to be modelled in this. Uh, it's an interesting development, but whether that particular tail should be wagging our traffic dog is another question. What I would suggest is that if we're going to see ten percent more cars in the next seventeen years, and lights good vehicle and heavy good vehicle, then this is going to be the least of the D1's problems. From the moment it leaves Bath to the moment it tries to get through Trowbridge to Warminster, it is going to be facing congestion at every point. It isn't just going to be an extra ten minutes here. It's probably going to be another half hour or so across the whole journey. There is a lot more investment that needs to go into public transport to make, to make that work. So there are just too many aspects of this. It's, I'm really not sure whether we've got value for money out of this exercise.
Thank you, Simon. Um, I can see Katie's got her hand up and then Kate's got her hand up and then I'll, I'll take. How many questions have we got on traffic, Sarah? Just the one. Okay. I'll, I'll take Katie and Kate, your hands up and then we'll do the public question and then we can, we can carry on. That's not a problem.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the overview from Tim explaining what the modelers had recommended and why. And I entirely take on board what Alex and Simon are saying, that we shouldn't just blindly accept a report. We've got to question it. We've got to think about whether it's right for us. We've got to hear what people in the town have to say. And I'm mindful that it is of great importance to lots of people and people have strongly and sincerely held views. I think we're also all mindful that this town has failed to move forward previously on projects that aim to improve the town centre environment in terms of traffic and for the benefit of pedestrian cyclists. So I think if we want to move forward, it's kind of the responsibility of all of us to take great care in how we discuss it, how we think about it and, and, and approach the whole decision making process. And my feeling is that there are still so many things that we need to find out and ask and, and establish before we make a decision. So that this isn't the right time to say, oh, we want this option or that option, because we don't have all the information. I think we've all got questions arising from, from this report. We do know it's clear from Wiltshire Council when we've met them that they will only take forward a project that they are confident has the clear support of the town because they've had their fingers burned with us before. And while it's never going to be possible to please everybody, I think we should try to build a consensus as far as possible and put fairness, realism and a spirit of compromise at the heart of our decision making. I think the other thing that makes this subject particularly complicated is that it affects different groups of people in different ways. Motorists, cyclists, pedestrian users of the town centre or potential users that are inhibited, inhibited at the moment by our difficult narrow pavements, the businesses and their perceptions, the safety of everyone using our roads and pavements around the town. And also those residents who live on roads that may be most impacted by changes in road use, affecting them for many hours of the day, not just for a short period of time when they're driving a car or using the town centre. So we are all affected in different ways and we aren't all affected equally. And so I think that's something that's really important that we need to consider when we're, when we're moving towards what we'd like to see. You've mentioned that the highways personnel at, at Wiltshire Council have changed. And again, that means that they, I mean, they hadn't read the report when they came to meet us. So there's still a long way to go with them. And I think also, and I, my view is that our objective this evening should be to think, what is it we need to ask Wiltshire next? So that we can, we can work out what the next stages should be, perhaps in terms of more engagement with people to get, to help everyone have a deeper understanding of it. I mean, the modelling did bring forward surprises in terms of what's recommended, in terms of the bus gate options. There are perhaps possibilities that we hadn't considered. I certainly haven't reached a view myself as regards what would be right or wrong. And I think that the sensible approach perhaps for us all is to think, well, what is the disadvantage of the thing I really like or what's the advantage of the thing I dislike? And, and just try to sort of engage around in the debate in that way so that we can perhaps come to some sort of fair conclusion as far as possible. So I think there are questions around the bus service and the consideration given to that, how far the bus operators could be engaged with as regards the timetables and the routes. But we don't want to be taking a bus service away from a part of the town, especially a part of the town which with options A and C will get more traffic. And, and then I think the other thing that struck me when I looked at the study and the map and the plans is that A and C are very similar. Could one evolve to the other if desirable? Could we have a physical trial of something? Could there be more modelling? So I think there's lots of questions we should ask and then think of the next steps that we take before we move to a decision.
Thank you, Katie. There's some sensible thoughts there. I'm writing to them definitely. And I, I would echo what you said around the sort of bus service as well. I know I was surprised when it came out as such a sort of explicit item they were mentioning. Um, and I also haven't made my mind up yet. I find it all very difficult to square. Um, I'll take Kate's. I know you had your hand up. Then we'll do the public questions and then we can carry on. Can I jump to public questions just because we need to, I do want to get to them and I will come to you straight away, Alex. Is that okay? Thank you, Kate.
Some really good thoughts from Katie there. And I would agree that it's really important that we work together and that we're measured and that we, you know, if we're going to move forward, then we have to move forward with agreement. I do think that's what we did when we voted for the traffic modelling and we voted for those three issues. The traffic volume, you know, reducing the volume, improving air quality and improving pedestrian and cyclist safety. And I think that's our real worry that this study hasn't addressed those issues. And I think to have voted for half of that, I believe thirty five thousand pounds that we paid for to do the study and to actually only personally only find out on the day that I came to the consultation, that volume was never going to be addressed, that we didn't, that, that they were, they weren't going to be looking at addressing the traffic volume. The modeler's argument was that Wiltshire wouldn't have any truck with that because their worry is that if we address traffic volume in Bradford and Avon, that volume might be pushed into other communities within Wiltshire. I think that completely ignores the fact that we're the centre of a much longer route, a much longer route of people going maybe from the M4 all the way down to Dorset. And to not look at volume, I think absolutely brings the issue that Simon talked about, which is that if we make it run more smoothly, we will just suck more people into our town. And we will have done these changes without having, you know, at great expense, a great disruption, without actually improving anything for us at all. And I, I just find it really frustrating. I was really looking forward to the results of this modelling and for us all to discuss what had been discovered. And it feels very much like there's not really a discussion, that it's option C is best and that's what we should go for. And that's what I feel I'm being pushed towards by the modelers.
Thank you, Kate. Um, we'll take the, the public question, uh, questions now. What have we got, Sarah? Ivan Wigham. Yes, please. Yeah, just for the live stream, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd say thank you, Katie, for your comments just now. That is, I have to say, the most positive reaction I've had to, heard of this study in the past six weeks. And I'm pleased that, I, I hope that is a position which can be adopted by more people. My question really is, why was there so much secrecy around the study?
Why was there so much secrecy? Was that, sorry, this, this thing has just started. Um, I don't think it was particularly secretive at all, really throughout the process. I think we were relatively clear in publishing the report on the website and making sure it was publicly available and then was there for people to see.
Can I just explain what I mean?
Sure.
A number of councillors here tonight have said they weren't engaged with the process while it was ongoing. They didn't know that volume was being prioritised. They didn't know bus service was being prioritised. So that's secrecy. You are the council. You weren't even talking to each other, never mind the rest of us.
So I think on the first point there, all councillors were at the beginning of the process very much invited to be part of the working group.
Excuse me, that wasn't, that wasn't my question.
No, but I'm giving you some background. So what I'm saying is at the start of the process, all councillors were invited to be part of working groups on this. And then I understand your question, being around the volume, not being in the survey, it's like you say, not being in the report, sorry. I think it's, it was difficult for us because obviously we are very much reliant on Wiltshire Council as the highways authority. We are in some, so many ways beholden to them, which is immensely frustrating. Um, but.
Sorry, I, I don't think you've understood my point. My point was, having gone through a very comprehensive exercise to identify what our priorities were, in the three month period or whatever it was, while the study was being developed, the council weren't engaged with each other in making sure and back check to make sure that those priorities that were identified by users, by locals, residents, were being prioritised in the study. So we were presented with, when the study was presented, a fait accompli. This is all we can do. And an example of that is the bus route. Nobody told us that the bus route was an immovable force. Nobody told us that the bus route would have to maintain an existing route. And nobody told us that a bus gate solution would be appropriate. And nobody has yet told us that a bus gate works. If I can give you an example, in Durham city, centre of Durham, they've got a traffic charging system, traffic congestion system, and they introduced a bus gate. They have reduced traffic volume because they've got a congestion system. They introduced a bus gate and they removed it after twelve months because it was causing so much confusion and because it didn't work. What we have here is this, the situation where a bus will get to the stop on the other side of the bridge. It'll wait, the traffic lights will stop on Silver Street. And then we have a period of nothing while that traffic clears until it's, the bus is able to go up, up Silver Street. That is the equivalent of a roadwork. It's not a set of traffic lights, it's a roadwork. It's what we had out Trowbridge Road a couple of weeks ago. And every time you approached it, there was traffic queuing each way. Now, if you build a blockage, an additional blockage into the system, inevitably the modelling is going to show it's going to cause more congestion, more delays. That's not what we want. And if the only thing that's stopping us being able to clear that obstacle is actually rethinking the D2 bus route, why haven't we done it?
So I think I, I share many people's here as sort of surprise at the bus coming out so high. And you asked those questions around the bus route. Why didn't we know this? Why didn't we know this? Well, I think the exercise of this modeler's report has obviously thrown up an awful lot of questions, which is why personally I do quite like Katie's idea of, I think we need more information from Wiltshire Council to make sure that we can make an informed decision further down the line. So I think there's certainly more opportunities here to ask more questions, to get some more information. And now we've seen what we've got in terms of the modelling report and go from there. That's why.
Okay, well, another example of secrecy.
Okay. These are a lot of questions, so if you can.
No, 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 it's, it's all one question. Why was there so much secrecy? And you obviously don't understand what I'm saying, so I'm trying to illustrate.
Okay, I think I do understand what you're saying. I'm just going to, I'm just going to bring in Tim for a second because he raised his hand and then we can carry on.
There's no secrecy. If anybody had asked these questions, they would have been answered completely openly.
Tim, that's not true. I've asked you these questions a number of times on emails and you have not replied to my emails. That is simply not true.
The emails you sent me postdate the study. They did not come in whilst the study was ongoing.
I have two points. The first one was that the secrecy was in action while the study was being carried out. That's the most important point because that was the point at which the issues could have just been discussed and hopefully resolved. The second one is that after the study was carried out, I have asked on a number of occasions, I've asked Uten, I've asked Wiltshire County Council for somebody to actually tell me who was it who gave the instruction that the D2 bus route could not be looked at to see if there was a better solution. Nobody, and it's, it's two months ago I wrote to Wiltshire County Council. I appreciate they've changed members. It's several, it's two months ago since I wrote to Uten. I haven't had an answer to who gave that instruction. Nobody has been able to tell me. That is secrecy.
So, so what I, I would echo what Tim has said in the fact there's no secrecy. I think we probably need to move on now. But actually, I think your point around asking why the bus was given so much prominence is, is a question I would like an answer to as well. And I'm sure other people on this council share that. So I would have absolutely no issue with a question along those lines going in a letter we write to Wiltshire Council to find out more.
Just one other point.
Go on, keep it brief.
On secrecy, I live in Mason's Lane, declaration of interest, live on Mason's Lane. Mason's Lane, in the report, there are no statistics related to the effect on Mason's Lane, none. And on the chart which we put up today, there were, there was no reference to the number of accidents on Mason's Lane. When the, the congestion, the northbound priority is introduced at the top of Market Street, the congestion on Mason's Lane is going to increase. the congestion on Mason's Lane is going to increase because traffic coming down Mason's Lane will be blocked at the bottom, including, I have to say, the D1X. So how does that facility improve bus routes?
Brilliant, thank you. Tim, do you want to come in and then we'll move on to other things? Thank you for your questions.
Most of the questions you're asking, Ivan, are covered within the modelling. So I think we can go through these in quite some detail, but I think it might be better if we did that in some kind of additional public discussion or consultation. And I'd just like to echo what Katie said. You know, we understand that a lot of people, you know, don't really want this particular option, but we, we, we will take on board people's views. So, so that will not be a problem. We, we can do that. That will be part of the process.
Brilliant, thank you, Tim. Yeah, absolutely. So just two things to mention as well while I'm thinking about it is, one, I believe we did ask Wiltshire Council officers, or was it Wiltshire Council Cabinet members to be here this evening, but we've had no response?
I asked the Wiltshire Council officers.
Fine. So they, they hopefully could have answered some of these questions, however they're not here. And yeah, the second part I was going to make is I think these are all really good discussions which potentially could go in towards Katie's idea. So thank you very much.
Thank you for acknowledging that a public debate on it would be useful. That's something which I asked for six weeks ago.
Brilliant, thank you. Alex?
Sorry, I just wanted to come back that reinforcing that the, the bus gate is a bit of an unworkable option in our small narrow streets, but I won't labour that more. But I, I totally agree with where we're moving here, but I feel that the process, and obviously it's hindsight, but you say we could have been on, on, on a working group, but I think that the assumption was that our, our priorities would be honoured and we would have some partially formed schemes that we could say, that looks like something we could get behind.
They were in the...
I didn't mean to say...
Sorry.
Well, they weren't. They might have been in your...
They were in the brief, I believe, yeah.
In, in your, your subcommittee, but what actually went to the final modelling should have, I feel like that's where we were not all included. And a subcommittee cannot make decisions, it has to be a council. So I, I just feel it should have reported back sooner and I don't think it even went to be traffic. So it's easy to look at what went wrong in the past and I don't want it to be a combative thing. I think we're all sitting around the table here thinking, what we want for the traffic in Bradford for us to be the least of it and not congested and not pouring out dreadful fumes and not waiting for 2041 before maybe doing nothing actually looks like the best option, which is a really bad answer. So I just would like to say that we wanted to be supportive in it, but we should, Wiltshire Atkins Study should have come back to us sooner with some ideas of what they were going to model. Because we could have, by a bit of Googling, you can see a bus gate is a really bad idea. Really, it's a really, really confusing bad idea. I've, I've looked at so many online now and different studies and newspaper reports that have ended up costing councils more for the damage they've done to the cars and paying back fines and people being confused. They're just not a good thing. So unless they've decided in 2041 how to do them properly, I think that's not for us. So, sorry, I know I've taken more time than...
No, you're, that's absolutely fair. We're here to debate it, I'm very happy to. No, I, I really welcome what you're saying there around, I genuinely believe all of us have pretty much the same aims here. It's just about how we achieve them. And I think the difficulty we all find is that we all want the best solution for the town, but we are having to be very realistic and very pragmatic of our goodwill and all of our efforts. We are reliant on them to implement and fund these changes. So I think exactly as Alex says, we need to try and find a path forward here where we can all come together. Yes, Sarah?
Just following on from that, I, I would really share the views that Alex has said about going in and checking with them, that they've got working examples of bus gates that work in our narrow streets. Because I, I've seen them work very successfully in Oxford and they seem to be, I think I'm, I'm the only person who was confused by them, everyone else seemed to think they were perfectly fine. So, and having been fined because I was confused, I, I do think it is worth making sure. So I'm, I'm equally concerned about the option with the bus gate. On the other hand, I do appreciate that when we had the social distancing system, which as you all know, I am a great supporter of, having been very instrumental in getting it through and on the ground in the first place, and having been the one who put up with the hundreds and hundreds of objections and people shouting at me in the street and dealing, dealing with Bridget Wayman getting threats to her personal safety. So I'm really supportive of that. But having said that, while that was going on, the bus had to go up Mason's Lane, which I don't know if you've ever driven a vehicle of that size, up Mason's Lane is terrifying because you go around the corner and we'd need to do something about the camber on it just to make it even possible. But then the bus went straight back down New Road, turned round at the bottom and came back up. Now, that's, that's what it did during the social distancing scheme. And it's not really a long-term solution. So it would be interesting to see if they've got any other ideas that wouldn't include the bus gate. The other thing that, that worries me enormously is that having been, and I know that Alex and Emma and Simon will share this with me, since the first thing we did in 2017 was say, we've got to do something about the traffic. And it was one of our priorities when you guys started on the town council and I started at Wiltshire Council. And here we are, years later, and we are edging towards something happening. And whilst I'm not sure that, that we are edging forward in the way that we would perhaps like to, I'm very conscious after these sort of six years of dealing with it, is that we are not in a position of power in that we are not the highways authority. And much as I would like to say, right, I think we should do this, this is what we want and we need to get on with it. I don't want to get into a situation where what we would ideally want gets in the way of what we can have. And I personally, at this stage, and maybe it's because I've been worrying about it for too long and I'm tired, but, and so ignore me if you think I'm wrong, but I would like to see something put in place that edges towards wider pavements, better air quality, which personally I feel anything that slows the through traffic down and convinces Google to send traffic elsewhere will help with the volume, but that's just my interpretation. But I would be happy to have something that is three-quarters of what I want rather than have nothing. And I, I don't want us to get into that situation where in trying to get the perfect, we throw out the good. That was my only real concern about all this. And I'm not 100% convinced that we're in the right direction, but we've got to make sure that we push forward to sump intervention, I feel.
Lovely. Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, absolutely. I think we're all singing from roughly the same hymn sheet on that one for sure. And has anybody got any other sort of comments at the moment they'd like to make? Otherwise, I'm trying to think of a way forward with this. Obviously, the consultation is still running until Sunday, the 12th. And so we'll have the results from that to hand presumably by the next time. Oh, yes, I'll come to you just a sec, Andrew, that's fine. By the time we meet at the next full council, if not sustainable travel. So that should also help shape some of our thoughts and processes going forward. And, yes, Tim?
I think maybe what we should do is put together a, a list of questions to present to Wiltshire Council Cabinet members and/or the senior officers there. I think this point about the D1 bus being affected all along its route by increased traffic load is actually a very good one because the schedule is already so tight. And if, if that's correct, the, you know, something's going to have to give. Either the schedule gives or the route gives. So that would be a very interesting question to put to them. It's not just Bradford on Avon, of course, is it?
We put the, I think we need to put to them the question that is, do they have working examples of bus gates that they can show us and that, to be honest, we could go and look at or try and either walk past or drive through? Because that, that is a, a big concern.
Thank you both. I'll take a very quick question from the floor, it's such an important topic, and then I think we'll need to move towards making some, some headway.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry I didn't put my name down. It's because I put my name down at the Sustainable Travel Meeting and I was asked to come to speak to this one instead because, well, anyway. So it's just a quick question, not a statement, and it's this. Did Wiltshire Council actually on the record say that solutions where traffic increases elsewhere outside of Bradford and Avon would not be acceptable to them, so they should not be studied? Or was it just hints behind the scenes?
Brilliant. Tim?
So if that's not clear, I'm sorry. And is this working?
Yeah, no, it was working.
Wiltshire, I gather from Kate and from the statement that went to the public event in this hall, that Wiltshire Council were saying that something that simply pushes traffic elsewhere wasn't on. Is that something that they said on the, in the written record in the run-up to this study happening? Or was it just informal? Thank you.
So far as I'm aware, Andrew, there is nothing in writing to that effect, but it, it's something that, and I can't remember exactly when, I, I'm, I'm sure that this has been discussed verbally, but I, as far as I'm aware, there's no, no written record of it.
Thank you, Tim. So unless anybody has any more sort of comments or thoughts on this at the moment, like I said, I think we need to bear in mind the consultation is still open as well until the 12th of May. Oh, Katie, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, do we want a formal motion suggesting that we write to Wiltshire Council or do we just agree informally and that we could share the letter and questions to all 12 councillors, a draft letter of the questions we want to ask, so all councillors can contribute their question ideas? And then that letter could go whether from you, Tim and Sarah as the Wiltshire councillors or just you, I don't know. But I think we could certainly circulate a draft perhaps to everybody.
Yeah, so that's... Sorry, Katie, yeah, that's, that's where I am with this. I think we've got an awful lot of questions between us here that we still need good answers to, to make a decent decision, as well as those consultation results coming in. So I, I think perhaps we should be looking at to write a letter to Wiltshire Council for asking for more clarification or some answers and some other questions. I've jotted down a few topics we've been discussing here tonight, which are, you know, working examples of bus gates, the sort of problem that Simon's had picked up on about the D1 bus route over the whole route if traffic is going up by 10%. One that I personally be keen to know about is, you know, are any of these options available to have as a trial? And would they be willing to fund that? Because I think this is a big decision we're making either way, so perhaps a trial might be the best way to start things. And then to ask around, I guess, our sort of three priorities and to give some more prominence to traffic volume or to get some answers around either A, why wasn't it considered? Or why wasn't it given more prominence? And see what answers we get from them that way. As Katie suggests, I'm very happy that we, we do that formally, put it on the website so that we make sure we get an answer. I can see hands, bear with me. Simon?
Good, I suggest that first of all, this actually ought to come from you as mayor on behalf of the town council.
I'm very happy to do that.
Because we're the commissioning body. And secondly, while we can set out questions, I can't help feeling it would be useful to have another face-to-face meeting with Wiltshire officers and, and council members if possible.
I would, I would welcome as many meetings with them as possible.
So that we can follow up and get to the bottom of some of these questions.
Yeah. Well, I think one of our questions can be, can you tell us some times and dates for some meetings, please? I would very, very much welcome a meeting with the correct Wiltshire Council officers and councillors and all of the council really, to see what we can get to and find out some more answers. That's a good idea, actually. Yes, that would be nice, wouldn't it? Absolutely. Alex?
Just a brief question. I, I know it's only now, next Sunday, but obviously it would be that we close the...
Oh, yes.
...consultation, but we might find that there's some very useful added questions from members of the public who, who we could add those questions in. So obviously we can't ask, add all their concerns necessarily because then hopefully would be lots of them, contributions from the public. But it would be wrong to try and rush a list off this week.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think if...
I was just trying to say, we, we certainly should consider some of the key responses.
Absolutely. I wonder if, if maybe, I'm, I'm happy to draft a letter on this basis, obviously we'll circulate it to everybody to, to sign off and add anything to. And maybe bringing up the responses to the consultation might be a good time to do that at a meeting with those Wiltshire Council people. Because I think, like you say, there'll be lots and lots of ideas in there and sending a list of 50 is going to get us nowhere. But bringing them up in a face-to-face meeting, absolutely.
And my understanding, I think, of what you might get back from, what we will get back from the consultation is because it asked us only about one. I think an awful lot of the meat of analys, that we have to analyse is going to be verbal response because...
That may well be the case.
They weren't saying, do you want one, two or three? They say, do you like this one? And if you didn't, the detail and the questions will be written. It's going to be quite a time-consuming...
I suspect there'll be a lot of qualitative data to be wading through, I'm sure.
Yes, so just, just, I wanted that to be...
Yeah, no, I think we should absolutely bear that in mind. One of the reasons we sort of, we can't move anything until we get that data is because we need to look at the responses. And a face-to-face meeting would be a great time to bring that up. Any other comments at the moment? If not, I'm quite happy to look... Oh, I can see some, sorry, somebody's waving away. Sorry. Yes, I'll take a brief question from the floor. You may have to go to the mic, I'm really sorry, just for the live stream. There may be nobody watching, but if there is, they will hear you.
Sorry, this isn't quite traffic modelling, but the new D1X is a valuable extra. I, it's brilliant that we have two buses now. The only thing I'd like to say is, it's really scary going up Mason's Lane. There are lots of overhanging branches. I don't know whose responsibility that is, but the bus gets cluttered a lot and I'm sure that's not... And it tends to go out in the middle of the road to try and avoid these branches. So it's just an observation.
No, really, really useful, definitely. I think we can, we can have a look at making sure those are cleared. I imagine they're in private properties mostly, but it's all private property, is it? That's fine. Sorry, yes, I will take, I'll take one more, one more question from the floor. You'll need to come to the microphone, please. Sorry, you'll need, sorry. Wait until you get to the microphone so the streamers can pick you up as well, sorry.
So cost has been mentioned. I understand that if any major changes in infrastructure, this sort of thing are undertaken, you have to do a cost benefit analysis. Is this going to be done? Who would do it? The town council or Wiltshire Council? I think that's important.
So the answer to the first bit, will this be done? I'm absolutely sure it will be done before anything is implemented. I would presume that Wiltshire Council would undertake that as the highways authority, but Tim's got his...
I don't think they will do it unless they are told. I mean, they know it's their responsibility, but they won't do it unless they are pushed.
Tim, sorry.
I just like to say, I think the council in the last two years has been really good. They've done lots of good things. The town is prospering. I think this, I think you should just forget it and leave things as well and let people sort out their own problems. You know, you're doing good things in town, but this is taking you all away from what is important.
Well, I think, I...
I have the confidence to say to people, we've done what we wanted, we've tried the one-way system, we've had a traffic consultation, all of them have problems, let's make do and do the best with what we have.
Thank you. Those comments are certainly noted and I thank you for the first half of what you said there about our, our good work over the last few years. Thank you. Tim?
Well, just to say, it would be Wiltshire Council.
It would be, yeah, fine, lovely. Okay. So shall we, do I need a motion on that then to say that we'll, I'm happy to write to Wiltshire Council as mayor with our, our sort of questions that we've brought up tonight? We don't have to stipulate those questions tonight, but I, I sort of formed a bit of a basis there and I'm very happy to circulate something later this week. Consensus is fine. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. Can we take nodding heads? That's fine. That's fine. So we, we'll agree to, to, to write to Wiltshire Council with some further queries and questions that hopefully they can provide some clarification to. And I think we should make sure we publish that on our website. I'm happy to write it as, as mayor. And hopefully that gets some, some sort of more timely responses on it. Sarah, I can see you wanting to come in.
Sorry, just a quick question, following up from something that Alex said, is that do we, do we want to rush in and get this letter out? Or do we want to wait until we've got the closure of the consultation in case as a first draft reading of the, the points that have been made by the members of the public, there are additional questions that we want to add to that? Or are we going to, I don't know, I'm not sure which is the best thing to do.
I'm, I'm, oh, I can see people, Tim?
Well, my, my only point about that is, I think there will be quite a lot of analysis of the text answers in the engagement.
It could, it could, it could take a while. As Alex said, there'll be a lot of comments.
I didn't mean we have to wait until we've done the NCN to agree. We could have a feeling for...
A look.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to only get a close, you're not going to have a letter...
I'm very, I'm very happy with that, we can wait until we've had a bit of a look.
So it doesn't have to be the full analysis of...
Yeah.
Yeah, my suggestion would be, yeah, a look through to see the main areas, but I think if we put in 20 questions to Wiltshire Council, we'll delay getting any reply, and I think within those key areas that we're aware people have got questions about, we can see if there's anything else obvious in the forms. But I think it would be good to send a letter off in the next couple of weeks, 10 days, really, to get some replies, that then will form the basis of information that we can share at the next Sustainable Travel, and also then, when we get a face-to-face meeting with them, we'll have more information as well, and we'll have the, hopefully, a write-up of the feedback responses that we can share with Wiltshire as well.
Thank you. That all sounds sensible to me. So I'm very happy to write that letter. I'll circulate it around to everybody. When we get to that point, feel free to add your comments, and then we'll get that one sent off. So I think we've discussed that one for now, which just leaves me with the provisional date, which I presume is now not provisional, because we've just voted to put them in. The date of the next full council meeting is the 9th of July, so we'll see everybody then.